Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of July 21st, 2021. I will begin, as we do with all online meetings, with a roll call for the Planning Board. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delio will be late. Anne Gardner.
Here.
Bob Calp.
Here.
Liam McGovern will be absent. Rick Tinker.
Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Don Walters will be late, and I'm Bonnie Sontag. Just before I hand it over to Counselor Shand, I want to welcome Bob Calp as our new member. Later in the Planning Board meeting, we'll do some introductions, but right now I'd like to move on to the joint public hearing. So Counselor Shand, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you very much, Chair Sontag. So this is Heather Shan, Ward 3, Counselor, Chair of Planning and Development Committee. I'm going to call our committee to order. Having a joint hearing tonight with the Planning Board, so taking a roll call vote is Counselor Wallace present?
Present.
And Counselor Igerman?
Here.
All right, so the Planning and Development Committee is here. Director Port, would you like to kick us off to get our joint public hearing started?
Sure, thank you. So since the last hearing night that you had on this amendment, I submitted a revised draft with some additional markup. As you may recall, at our last meeting, we had some discussion of substantive items in the ordinance amendment. Although the ordinance amendment was not originally drafted to focus on substantive areas because it touches some substantive areas of the ordinance, we wanted to discuss a bold list of issues. We had a good amount of discussion and consensus, I think, on some of those issues in the last meeting. So I attempted to draft some language that would address those concerns or those outcomes of that discussion. Confirmed with Jennifer Blanchet regarding language, and then sent that out to all of you to take a look at. And I guess I would defer to you on where from here you'd like to, if there's any particular issues folks would like to discuss or anything else.
Chair Sontag, how would you like to proceed? Would you like to open it up to public comment to start?
That's probably a good idea, and then we'll bring it back and let City Councilors and Planning Board members comment. So why don't you go ahead and do that?
All right. So as is typical with any public comment in a Zoom world, we just need you to raise your electronic hand to speak. All right, if I don't see an electronic hand, well, I do. All right. Stephanie Nikotic.
Thank you, Counselor Shan. Stephanie Nikotic, 93 High Street. Newburyport zoning is needed updating for decades, and since 2014, many staff, board members, and counselors have worked to finally accomplish this. I have regularly followed their meetings as a member of the public. After seven years, it is not perfect that amendments are coming out now piecemeal and in a disjointed way. But I have read through these amendments, and after so much delay in our zoning recodification project, I believe they are to clarify the intent of the ordinance in areas which arise frequently to simply make it easier for staff and boards to interpret and enforce our current zoning. I see this in several areas of the amendments, but just to point out one, 6F yard setback requirements, which to me has become something of an emergency. I appreciate there may be some ways to improve the language, and I appreciate and hope for consideration of comments by members of the affected boards and by counselors. With that, I am in favor of the changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nikotic. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? All right, with that being said, I would say we bring it back into the Planning Board, into the Planning and Development Committee to discuss. All right. Bonnie, how would you like to get it from here?
I thought maybe we give it to the counselors first, as we have done, and see if anyone wants to make any final comments on this.
All right. All right, so I see Counselor Wallace's hand. Counselor Wallace?
Yes, thank you, Chair. One item that I wanted to further discuss that I did not bring up last time is with regard to fences under yard requirement. That's 6F, number six. And my concern is with the height, the four-foot height for the front yard. I live, just as an example, I live on Merrimack Street, and you know, Merrimack Street is also, takes up a lot of Ward 4, and it's just constant noisy traffic. So I think it was Counselor Zee had made the comment about, you know, fencing to kind of shield that. So I guess my concern is in the height requirement. And then my other question, and that talks about the front yard, it looks like the side yard is seven feet. But then we define side yard. Or actually, a perfect example is my house. I'm actually on a corner, and my first question is, it's a private road, so does that count as a corner lot? But some of these properties are really long. So what I think is my side yard would actually be considered the front yard. So I wouldn't be able to put any sort of privacy fence that's over four feet, if that makes sense. So it's a combination of the height of the fence and the definition of corner and side yards that could be kind of an issue. Thank you.
Counselor Shan, this is Andy. Could I address that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Director Port.
Thank you. Others may want to comment on this, of course, and zoning administrator may also want to comment on experiences that she's had, you know, reviewing issues with residents. But my general sense is that the reason why I would suggest you might want to consider some policy here, it's included some policy relative defenses in their height and front setbacks, is only because if everybody were to put up a taller fence, you might destroy the streetscape essentially. And so I think the assumption here is that having low fences, you know, can provide some level of privacy. But Counselor, you bring up a valid point, and you know, Merrimack Street, for instance, lots of noise, certainly coming from cars going back and forth. My reading of this provision is there's an attempt as a policy here to make sure that the streetscape isn't destroyed by, you know, rows and rows of six-foot-tall fences, as people, you know, say, you know, trying to ensure individual privacy, you know, to an excessive extent maybe, but there may be some other considerations others have on this. But I think that was the reason why the fourth was mentioned, as opposed to, say, six-foot or no height on it.
Would Counselor Igerman?
Yeah, I agree. Frankly, when I saw this, I hadn't thought of a situation like Merrimack Street. That's a special case. You know, in the South End, if we were to allow front yard fences higher than four feet, it would obviously be disastrous. That would really totally change everything. You know, similarly, other big streets that have a lot of traffic, High Street, you know, has a lot of traffic on it nowadays. But again, I would not support a height greater than four feet. So I think to give relief to homeowners such as Counselor Wallace, you know, I do think this is a case of variance, you know, where someone come with a variance. Because I don't really know that we want to create a special permit situation just for Merrimack Street. Those are just my two cents on the fly. I see other hands up.
Jennifer Blanchet?
Counselor Igerman mentioned High Street. High Street is where we were starting to see some of these six-foot and seven-foot fences along the highly trafficked and, you know, entryway to Newburyport, if you will. And so that was where the concern came from. To Counselor Igerman's other point and Counselor Wallace's concern, certainly explaining these unusual circumstances of the lot is definitely a criteria, you know, an available situation for a variance, as would any of these, you know, corner lots where it actually functions perhaps as a side yard. Those could all be looked at where they are the anomaly through a variance, as opposed to allowing this to happen citywide at a higher height.
Thank you, Jennifer. I see Counselor Connell's hand. Your hand was up.
Yeah, I guess I'll comment on it. I was going to say something before Jennifer spoke, but this does not prohibit the creation of a vegetative barrier that can be pretty effective against sound incursion. And I think of the example of the properties abutting Route 95 in Ward 6, the properties that are closest to the highway, where there was considerable debate about what they could put up to attenuate the sound of the highway nearby. And when we discussed that some years ago, creating vegetative barriers was recommended, and it's been quite effective. If you tamp down the noise, and I haven't heard boo from those butters since then, so I'm assuming it's working. I do appreciate what Counselor Wallace has said and agree that a zoning variance, if you need to put up something solid for that purpose, maybe a a variance is the way to go, and I'm sure that the boards with jurisdiction would listen very carefully to a petition of that type.
Thank you, Counselor Connell. Are there any other Counselor? Counselor Wallace, thank you.
Yeah, you all make a good point with the variance. And this would be kind of a unique situation, but you know, as long as residents still could do it if they feel the need. Because the height, you know, all depends on your grade, and if you can see or hear the road. But my one question, well, first question, can someone explain, is a corner lot, what if it's a private road? Because actually on Merrimack Street, there's quite a few private roads.
I think that that counts as a street, right?
Yeah. Yeah, public or private won't make a difference for the corner lot definition.
Okay, okay, that was my question. All right, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So other comments on the ordinance as it has been amended overall? We've gone through this, I think, this is our third time.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to address, if I could, Chair Shan, the green highlights, that's all. There are just two comments that Andy.
Yes, thank you.
So that's all. So on the first one, which appears on page 7 out of 17, this is the amendment to Section Roman numeral 6J. I think what we've done will satisfy the city solicitor because it says, "The requirement may be waived upon written approval of the zoning administrator after consultation." So I mean, consultation doesn't mean they're bound, you know. The city engineer could jump up and down, but it's up to the zoning administrator. So I think we're okay on this, if everyone else is legally. It's the call of the zoning administrator. That's one. I want to flag that. And then the second and last one is on page 17 of 17. And there's a proposal from staff that in dealing with this 25% rule for the de-cot, that if there's removal of a nonhistoric addition which exposes historic wall, then you would get a credit. You know, in concept, that sounds okay. I mean, I guess I wanted to hear from Jennifer if that's come up.
The question was asked recently where there was a small addition off the rear side, clearly nonhistoric, could be documented through building permits even. But we have no way right now of actually giving someone credit. They wanted to do an addition off the backside and then take this, I guess the shed addition was off the side. And they could not do both the addition off the rear and remove the nonhistoric addition and be within that 25%. And it seemed that they were being penalized. Or, you know, either they couldn't do the addition to the extent that someone else could, or they had to keep this addition, the nonhistoric addition that sort of derogated from the historic character.
Okay, it makes sense to me if it does to other counselors to put this language in.
Jennifer, was that a recent event?
It was a recent inquiry. The project has not gone forward. I think that maybe they were trying to figure out what to do.
Okay. All right, so this could give them some relief, understood. If they decided to go forward. All right.
I said, I just wanted to air those out. Otherwise, I thought we spent a lot of time on this last time, and I don't have any further comments personally.
I agree. I went through the sheets looking for the eight topics that we discussed last time, and it looked like everything was caught. So I agree.
Well, I guess I just wanted, before we vote, I'd like to hear from the Planning Board, and then I'd be ready to vote.
Right. Chair Sontag?
Fine, so I'd like to ask Planning Board members if you have any comments tonight on the revisions or the original. Rick?
Thank you. I have a number, some of them are things that I think we kind of skipped over the last meeting. And do you want to go through, do you want me to go through all my comments? Or do you want to go section by section and have all the board members discuss sections?
Why don't you go through yours? And so let me just say this to the other board members. If you want to jump in, I mean, this is, we're trying to simulate a conversation so they can jump in at any time, either to comment on what you've commented on or to add something different.
Okay, thank you. So if we go to page five, we talked a lot about these yard setbacks. And item four on five, I think we were wordsmithing the last time. And I think this is pretty much what we came down with. But I think the sentence could be clearer if it were broken into two sentences to begin with. And to say, instead of taking however, to basically say, "If greater than four feet in height, such equipment shall be screened from view." And then, just to clarify, "From adjacent lots and public spaces." And it's not clear what is screened from view from, to me. So I was thinking that we might want to specify that it's screened from view from adjacent lots and from public spaces, or if it's only one of the others. I just raised that issue. So just first, my first point, going down to six, this, the last sentence of six seems to say that any mechanical equipment can be in the front yard as long as it's less than four feet in height. So I guess this says we could have a generator or a heat pump or something like that right against the sidewalk. And I'm just wondering whether we want to be a little bit more protective than that. I certainly would want to be more protective than that. So I would, I would say maybe, I guess you could take away the greater than four feet. I'm not really sure about that. That would make it say, "All mechanical equipment should be prohibited in the front setback." But that would be something I think we would have to discuss. On page six.
Wait, wait, why don't we just stop and discuss it?
Okay, sure.
I think that might be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's more than a mechanical equipment in that sentence. You're just dealing, everything else looks okay, but you want to take mechanical equipment out of there as something allowed.
What you've said is, what it says is, you can't have sheds in the front yard. You can't have swing pools in the front yard. You can't have mechanical equipment more than four feet high in the front yard. But you can have mechanical equipment up to four feet high in the front yard. So I think that means you could have a generator, you know, as close to the sidewalk as, you know, electric codes would allow. And similarly with a heat pump. And we had so much discussion about heat pumps in the side yard at our last meeting, but we really didn't talk about them in the front yard.
Can anyone think of a situation where we should allow this up to four feet in the front yard for mechanical equipment?
Jennifer had her hand raised.
Go ahead. I can't see all these people.
Oh, okay.
So I have to keep flipping through to see them, so.
All right, I just wanted to be clear that as written, and it's not that we are necessarily proponents of this, it's just the way that the wordsmithing came out. It would allow mechanical equipment within the front yard setback. And I'm not sure, to Rick's point, that that is something that the city would want to see. So we might seriously consider adjusting this.
I think that's, I agree with the aesthetic concern. I know there might be some other councils or wards that have tighter constraints and may feel that that's too limiting based on the available options. But I agree with this sort of generic aesthetic concern, but it's sort of a policy balancing act, right?
I see Counselor Igerman's hands is up.
Yeah, no, just as recently as yesterday, I saw a heat pump in a front yard on Fair Street. And I said to myself, you know, that really doesn't belong there. So I would propose and support striking the words "greater than four feet in height above existing grade." I would. I mean, again, this is a situation, if someone has a variance situation, they should get a variance. But, you know, for 99% of the cases, it really is not appropriate to have a heat pump in the front yard. But if there's some topographical problem, that's what variances are for, and the zoning board would be able to give relief.
I see Counselor Wallace's hand, and then I'll come back around to all of the Planning Board folks.
Sure, thanks. Somewhat along these lines, just thinking of the, again, the definition of front yard and side yard. Again, I know on Merrimack Street, there's a ton of long, narrow properties, and I'm sure there's others throughout the city. So what could happen, I was just thinking about this. My, like, my front yard is long, along the private road. So my side yard, I could actually put up a seven-foot fence, and I could put all the mechanical equipment and all the other stuff right, like, straight out on Merrimack Street. So that would just be a buy right kind of thing.
Counselor Wallace, if I can interrupt, I apologize for this, but Merrimack Street is also a front yard. So that's, just because your longer frontage is your primary front yard, the other street is still a front yard, so you would not be able to put it along that.
It's two front yards.
Exactly.
The primary and the secondary. I apologize for the confusion, but okay, that makes sense. And yes, I agree with Counselor Igerman. Thank you.
All right, I see Alden Clark has got his hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I agree with removing the language. I think you were looking for situations where you, this might be, someone might look for this, and I think it was what was raised. If there's some sort of physical barriers or things such that it cannot be put anywhere else, you know, that might be a situation where someone might be trying to do this. But if that were the case, they would be looking for a variance, right?
All right, Jennifer, okay, Jennifer, your hand's still up? As is Rick's. So is there a motion on the floor to amend this one, to get, or just get rid of greater than four feet altogether?
Yeah, I mean, it's so moved. Eliminate everything greater than four feet in height above existing grade, all those words.
Okay, got it.
Second.
All right, well, I'm in favor of that.
Chair Sontag and Chair Sharon, can I just ask, as we go point by point, I had no issue with, I think, Rick's prior comment about breaking number four into two separate sentences. I don't, again, I don't know, just, I don't know if it makes sense to go point by point, just to make sure there's consensus on any adjustments, but I have no objection to that if that's.
Right, I agree. Rick, why don't you read exactly what you want so we can make sure it's documented correctly? And then we can just go, continue going point by point.
Going back to number four?
Yes.
Okay, my suggestion was to put a period after the words rear yard and start a new sentence. "If greater than four feet in height, such equipment shall be screened from view from adjacent lots and public spaces, fences, and/or landscaping."
So moved.
Second.
Should we vote on these now, Chair?
I would, so.
Okay, well, okay, so I'll do as a combined motion, both the change to six and the four, because they were both seconded by Counselor Wallace.
Okay, all right. So first one is, "Mechanical equipment to the property shall be permitted within required side or rear yard period. If greater than four feet in height, such equipment shall be screened from view from adjacent lots and public view." I think I got that, and then the last.
Including the words with fencing and/or landscaping.
With fencing and/or landscaping, excuse me. And then we all agreed on the removal of greater than four feet in height above existing grade in Section 6. So all those in favor? Roll call.
Yeah, roll call, sorry.
Counselor Igerman?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan, yes. All right, so we agree. Mr. Tanner, why don't you continue?
Okay, on the next page, page six, there was a good discussion about the question of a zoning compliance certificate. And as I read the language, it seemed to me that this is a bigger issue than accessory structures. This putting it here implies that that's the only place that the zoning administrator would give a zoning compliance certificate. But you can imagine other places where there are, where things may not require a building permit or maybe a use or something like that. And I'm just wondering whether it would make sense to place this under either Sections 10C, which is the duties of the zoning administrator, or Section 10D permits, rather than having it tucked in here because, as I say, otherwise it looks like this is the only thing that the zoning administrator can get a zoning compliance certificate for, unless I'm missing it somewhere else in the ordinance. I didn't see it anywhere else.
I could, this is Andy, if I could, I mean, would it be possible to just strike the word accessory and just leave the rest of it in place with that language?
Well, this is under the heading of accessory structures.
It's underneath the yard setback requirements, and then, right? So that's why I was thinking, left it, and just took out the word accessory. I don't know if Jennifer or anyone else has anything comment on that.
Well, I have a question. So Jennifer, when somebody comes and asks you for a zoning compliance letter, which I gather they do quite often, do you give those under 10C or under 10D?
I can't say, as I issue them under a particular section at present. The zoning compliance, or as we call it, the accessory structure permit, is a relatively new form, and I guess we did not contemplate exactly what section it was being issued under.
Okay. Well, I would suggest, rather than trying to move this, you know, to a new section, why don't you just cross-reference Roman numeral 10-C, where it gives the duties of the zoning administrator? I mean, I don't think, I don't think anyone really would latch on to this and say, "This is the only way I can get a zoning determination."
No, and that, I think that's a good solution, Counselor Igerman.
Yeah, so something, how about this, Rick? So "Any accessory structure not requiring a building permit under the state building code shall be eligible for a determination of legality from the zoning administrator under Section Roman numeral 10-C, provided blah, blah, blah." How's that?
Sounds good.
Heather, does that make sense?
Got it, yep.
Okay, so moved.
Second. All right, roll call. Counselor Igerman?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan, yes. All right, moving right along, Rick.
Page seven. The sentence that begins with accessory buildings or structures. So it refers to Section 6F. But Section 6F 10E says that accessory buildings must comply with the height requirements for principal buildings. So it seems like this contradicts that. So in other words, if there were a zoning district where a principal building was allowed a 30-foot height, it would seem like Section 6F would say it could be 30 feet, the accessory building could be 30 feet. And this section says it could only be 20 feet. Unless I'm missing something, it seems like there's a direct contradiction.
Jennifer, I see your hand is up. Is that language on the screen? I think you've got, yeah, it's kind of in the middle, I believe.
Yeah, it's the second paragraph down, accessory, that one.
There we go. Yeah, there we go. Yep. It took a while for me to find it, too.
Yeah, and I, I mean, Jennifer, I read the word beyond as other than, other than those permitted. Okay, so, so, so I'm trying, so hold on, so section 6F allows in yard setbacks, a detached accessory building up to 15 feet in height.
Right. What, what I have always interpreted this to mean, and it still reads this way to me, uh, is that there are accessory structures larger than 22 by 24 allowed on a property, but they can't go within the side yard setback. And those larger structures still cannot exceed a height of 20 feet.
Oh, I see. I, I, I got it. So you could, so long as you're complying with the setback and you're, you're not exceeding lot coverage.
Exactly.
Open space minimums, you can, you could have an accessory building in addition to your principal home.
Right. What that prevents is having an accessory structure that competes in scale with the primary structure.
I got it. Okay, well, how about, how about we reword this? I'd make a motion to change the say other than those permitted within setbacks under section 6F. Other than those permitted within setbacks under section 6F.
Second.
Okay, so that would be the beginning of the sentence. Got it.
No, no, I, I, I'm sorry, in place of the underlying language, so in place of the underlying language, so basically the underlying language, you would say other than those permitted within setbacks under section 6F.
Okay.
Well, I, I think this, there's still a contradiction. Because when you go, unless you can explain it to me, you go back to page six and item E says that accessory structures shall conform to the height, front, side and rear yard setback requirements. So that seems to say that a, a accessory structure that is not within the setbacks shall be as high, can be as high as a principal building.
But, but you, you have to read it all together, Rick. That's the whole point. There's a later, there's a later section that says you can only be 20 feet high.
So, well, couldn't we just delete the word height then in in item E?
Sure.
Jennifer, you were trying to speak?
I was, I was going to understand, you know, formally understand Rick's concern and and that solution deleting the word height solves that. I have always gone with the more restrictive governing. And therefore it was not of a particular issue, but it won't hurt to clarify. That's the whole point of this revision.
Okay, the other, but the one thing I had to make sure is there's no instance where the height would be lower than 20 feet. Do we have any instance where the height would be lower than 20 feet for an accessory structure that complies with the setbacks? Garages are other conform to. Sorry, 6I. Okay, that's different than 6F. Okay. 6I, exceptions to maximum heights, chimneys, lighters. Oh, I see, all right. Actually, the height of 20 feet. Well, that, yeah, so they're cross referencing. He is cross referencing the next page. That is I. So, hold on a second. Shall conform. Okay, all right, I think what you do is he just changes to say in addition to, so the rear yard setback requirements provided in section 6 dash I, in addition to any other requirements applicable, about that. Rick, does that clarify?
Well, I was thinking that you could just, just delete the word height and that would solve it. Is that, wouldn't that, wouldn't that take care of it?
Well, but we want people to read 6I. We want them to read 6I on the next page, which says 20 feet. Right?
Okay.
So I, I don't, I don't think they're contradictory. It's a cross reference. He is cross referencing I, it's saying.
But he says that it has to conform to the height requirements applicable to primary buildings. That's what, that's my point.
No, 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 no. The, the, the setback requirements provided in section 6 dash I, in addition to any other requirements applicable to primary buildings.
Okay, so that the, so that the, so that the height front side, well, doesn't, I'm sorry, doesn't, isn't the point of E to say that garages have to comply to the setback requirements? And then they, then you go to, go to I as an exception for small garages?
No, I think, I think the purpose of E is to say you have to comply with two sets of things for these accessory structures. You have to comply with 6I and anything else that already applies to primary buildings. That's what I think it means. But Jennifer, I didn't write this, so.
Nor did I, the original. I have always interpreted the original to essentially mean what Rick is saying, but we have not had any confusion with the language, because what people, that what has been read is that they need to comply with all of the all of the primary structure requirements, which set the bar somewhere above 20 feet across the city. And then we apply this second layer, which the further restriction, which is the 20 foot maximum. So like we have elsewhere in this ordinance, we have, we have sort of a minimum standard, and then we further refine it in detail. I'm if I'm, I'm not coming up with the language right now that would.
The only, the way I could, the only other way I can make it more explicit, Rick, is to add the word both. So in, in this section, we're looking at E, not this one, go back to E, and E, it could say in the third line, and rear yard setback requirements, both as provided under section 6 dash I and in addition under any other requirements applicable to primary buildings.
Okay, that might do it.
Got it? Okay. Heather, did I go too fast? Did you get that?
No, I was writing it down, but if you want to read the sentence one more time to make sure I got it, I have.
I'd rather you read.
Okay. All right, so dimensions shall conform to the height, front, side and rear yard setback requirements in addition to both as provided under 6I within section. Do I have that right? No.
No, I think it's, sorry. I'll read the whole thing. Garages or other such accessory structures, whether attached or detached, that exceed the above dimensions shall conform to the height, front, side and rear setback requirements, both as provided under section 6E, six, 6I.
Thank you.
And in addition under any other requirements applicable to primary buildings or structures in the zoning district where located. So it's both.
All right. All right.
This is Andy, if I could, just to clarify, we will leave the word height in place then.
Yeah, because we're telling you have to comply with both, both.
I see two hands up. MJ Verde? And then we'll have Counsel Connell.
Okay, I just, I guess I want to make sure that in this reworking of the language that a shed of less than 20 feet is still needs to meet these requirements.
Yes.
There is, there is still the exception for the small sheds within the side yard setback. But those all have the explicit height limit of 15 feet.
Okay, and they still have to have the side yard setbacks, typical side yard setbacks.
The small ones are exempted to the six foot dimension as they have been.
Okay.
You all set with that one, MJ?
I guess so.
All right, Counsel Connell?
Yeah, I, I think I understand what you're doing here. But my comment has to do with what about general good construction, to the extent possible, cross referencing is is, is an opportunity for mischief. And it would be better, in most cases, I believe, to have the exceptions immediately appended to the original controlling language. And by putting them right next to one another, people could see in one reading what's meant by the, the regulation. That's all. So the, the, the solution could be to put it right next to F and not have a cross reference where people can flip back and forth and drive Jennifer crazy.
So isn't it already next to F? I'm sorry, I'm missing what you're trying to get at here.
Was the suggestion to move section I on the following page up to this section F?
Yeah, and make it a, make it a part of F.
Okay, yeah, I, the only thing comment I would make about that is that section I is referring to height regulations, whereas the prior section is revealing with the yard. I don't know if that.
Yeah, you can argue it either way, I guess. And you, and I'm not a voting member, so you just throw me out.
No, listening to everybody here, it's not a problem. All right.
Rick likes that.
All right, so, well. I would suggest we stick with what Counsel Agarman suggested, which if I'm going to try reading it one more time, garages or other accessory structures where they're attached or detached that exceeded the above dimension shall conform to the height, front, side and rear yard setback requirements, both as provided under section 6I and in addition to any other requirement applicable to primary buildings. Did I get it right this time, Counsel Agarman?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion? Is there any other comments on this one? Are we good keeping it here and not moving it around?
Well, if I could comment on moving around, I mean, we're kind of stuck with the existing structure of the code, which has called out exceptions for height under 6I. Yes, as, as Andy Port pointed out, we would have to do more restructuring to take Counsel Connell's suggestion. So we're kind of stuck, so I would not support that. That's, that's too much brain damage, but I, I do want to make sure that basically it's understood that if you build a garage or an accessory structure, you have to comply with every regulation of the code. You know, and so we're, we're cross referencing 6I because we know that one applies and maybe the problem is you see how the proposal is to strike the word accessory and add the word primary? Maybe, maybe we shouldn't modify the word buildings or structures at all. It's just whatever is applicable to buildings or structures, whether accessory or primary. Maybe that would make it clear that we're saying you, you gotta comply with every rule. Is that, because I think with, that's what MJ was getting at, is she wanted to make sure that we weren't creating a loophole.
Right. MJ, I see your hands up.
Um, I, I, I will agree with Jared, but I want to go, once you resolve this, I would have another part of 6I that I wanted to mention, which has to do with the parapet walls, so.
Okay. Well, Counsel Agarman, do you want to strike primary? To keep it.
I would. I, I, I think it would make it even, even clearer. You have to comply with everything. I, I, I don't want, I'm not trying to create confusion. We're trying to eliminate confusion.
Right, Jennifer, do you have any issues with that one?
Not that I'm seeing immediately. I will certainly study it before this is voted in.
Okay.
We, we have two more votes ahead of us at the city council, so.
Right. All right, so striking primary as well, keeping it applicable to buildings or structures in the zoning district. All right. Um. I'll take a motion.
Awesome.
All right, second. Voting, Counsel Agarman?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Shan, yes. All right. But let's go back to MJ. Rick, we'll come back to you.
Oh, yeah, I just thought I'd mention it because we're on the same page. So I, it was not part of the last meeting, so I wasn't involved with this, but in discussing the parapet walls, not greater than four feet in height, I'm very concerned about what, how is parapet wall defined? And is it something that can add four feet to the edge of a building? Or it doesn't need to be transparent in some way? Jennifer can probably answer that.
So the current, a parapet wall currently, and they very often are as high as four feet, use the, use the parking garage, for instance. One can stand on the roof deck there and the wall is approximately four feet. That's somewhat anticipated in many definitions of, of height calculation that use the deck as the flat roof. Where this came, and we wanted to clarify is a few years back, we saw a proposal that showed 10 foot parapet walls, essentially creating an outdoor room up there and, and really increasing the height. We could, we could reduce that height, but a, but a 42 inch or four foot parapet wall is relatively customary.
This is Andy, I would concur with that, not only Newbury Port, but also elsewhere.
I'm all set. Thanks.
All right. All right, Rick, back to you.
Okay, thank you. So at the bottom of page seven, talking about section 6J of the zoning ordinance, the existing wording in the ordinance is standard wording that you can see in any, you know, zoning ordinance or zoning bylaw anywhere. And it creates a visibility triangle across a corner lot. The, by getting rid of the line connecting the sidelines of the intersecting streets, this definition seems to completely get rid of the site triangle. And it says that only along the property lines for a distance of 20 feet are the is, or is it prohibited to have something between three feet and seven feet above grade? So they say by getting rid of that triangle, is this seems to say that right along the property line, you can't have anything in that space. But where the site triangle used to be, you now can do it. And I don't think that was the intent, but that seems to be the effect. You know, I think that, I think that the existing language, which is, as I say, standard language is good language, and I think it gets confused by, by making the change.
If I, if I could speak, I think that that issue is addressed by the, the rounded corner in this, the following statement where you do take and you extend those to make that site triangle. I.
I, I don't see that. I, I I think the issue is you've gotten rid of that, that connecting line that connects the edge of the side, the, the, that creates the triangle by, by deleting the line joining points on such lines. So, so you're basically defining two linear pieces that where things aren't allowed to be blocking sightlines.
I do agree, Rick. I, I see what you're saying, and I, that was not the intent. The, the interior triangle on the lot is lost if you delete that line, and I, I think that would be a mistake.
A line joining points on such lines, right?
I think the original wording is, is better.
I'm sorry, just, I just want to make sure we're all clear about what we're talking about. When you say original language, do you mean every markup on this paragraph or just certain? I just want to make it clear which pieces you're talking about.
I think the beginning of the sentence should read between the property lines of intersecting streets and a line joining points on such lines 20 feet from their points of intersection. Or in the case of a rounded corner, the point of intersection of the tangents. You know, I think, I think that that the edits in the first two lines should be removed.
Where this is section is to address visibility, I, I and it's not, it's prohibiting elements that are, you know, taller within that section. I think that we, to Rick's point, that that is an important area to, to retain.
Okay. Any other comments from others? I mean, Jennifer, if you agree? I mean, Jennifer, if you agree.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could argue over the word along versus between, but things like that, but I I I would support generally keeping the the substance of the line joining. At least that one section.
The first two, the first two lines of that area. The the bottom part where we had KP law, that we're going to keep, but the first two lines at the top, we want to go back to the original. Counsel Eigerman?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. We will keep working on it on the language. We all have the same intent. You're not supposed to build within this triangular area. We've got it. But I'll make I'll make the motion to revert to the original language on the first two lines.
All right, second. All those in favor, Counsel Eigerman?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Shan, all right, moving right along.
Page ten. And this is that policy question we had about, and I I don't remember how it was resolved, but I think this language at the end of the second paragraph, the 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 sentence that begins requests for waiver of any particular submission requirements. I think that is saying that somebody has to come to the planning board to request a waiver before actually submitting the application, which is not necessarily how we do it now. So I think this means an additional meeting and I'm I just want to make sure that that is what this means and that that is the intent, that we all understand that that is the intent, that we would be adding another meeting if that's the case.
Uh, this is Andy. I I I'm unnecessarily sure I concur that this does that, you know, this definitely basically said, I mean, right now, if someone submits an application and they do not submit the materials that are typically required for that submission, we're going to tell them it's incomplete and not send it to the board, but what I guess we were trying to get at here was rather than waste the time with an incomplete application, which comes up more frequently, we've seen those instances. You know, the each one is a different scenario as to how it might have come to that scenario, but boards have routinely mentioned to me anyway, why are we wasting time on something that's incomplete? So we were trying to make sure here that nobody is wasting time on something that doesn't have the complete materials. And if an applicant, if we've determined the ordinance, what's required for board reviews and we're clear about that and we're comfortable with those requirements, then applicant should ask for waivers of that from the board before wasting the board's time with an incomplete application. I guess we were putting it the, you know, in in the opposite direction to make sure that boards weren't wasting time, staff weren't wasting time on on a half-baked application. Like, that was the intent, I guess. You know, all points made are valid, but I think that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Could I make a suggestion? I I I think you guys are, you have the same policy goal. So at the end of this, at the end of this paragraph, it could read instead of in advance of formal submission, it should say before uh, the application may be considered complete or eligible for consideration, right? Because that's that's what you're saying. They can submit it, but it won't be deemed complete until they get the approval.
Well, yeah, and I guess that's part of my concern is just that the typical process with this, right? The clock starts ticking when it is a complete application, so the stamp goes on.
I know, I know, I know, I'm taking the language from from the beginning of the paragraph, which says consider complete or eligible for consideration, and I'm putting it where it says in advance of formal submission. So again, I I you are using formal submission as a synonym for complete application. I'm just being expressed so that Rick isn't confused and it it's not in advance of formal submission. It's before it's considered complete or eligible for consideration.
Understood. So we would, as typical right now, let the applicant know that their application is incomplete.
Yeah, you say you're incomplete. You can submit it, but you got to go to the planning board and they have to waive the requirement. Staff doesn't have that, you know, I I'm sorry. Staff sometimes has the power, but it sometimes does not.
Right, agreed entirely. And and I think that what we would see there is essentially the board would not be looking at the application on the night they're looking at the matter. They would be looking first at the request for the waiver of that submission requirement.
Which I think. And I think that's normal in other communities where you say, you know, I really don't need, I have nothing that's producing noise, so I'm not going to submit a noise study. And then you you get permission for that, and then once it's given either by the board or the staff is appropriate, then it is deemed complete.
So there are two different ways I could interpret that, and I guess do you mean that the board could vote at a meeting to grant the waivers and then move on at the same meeting to consider the application?
If you want.
Well, that's the, yeah, because I think that's that's probably, that's more like what we do now. And so what I what I was concerned about was if somebody, you know, had a project where they didn't generate much traffic. They wanted a or a noise, as you as you said, that they would have to come to us. We would have to discuss that waiver question and then and then send them away to come back a couple of weeks later to.
I don't I don't see any of the year that makes you send them away.
Well, when you the wording you've, the wording that you are providing, I think takes care of that. Because what it said is in in advance of formal submission of the right now. So if we get rid of that wording and use the wording that you said, then I think that solves that. The only additional thing I would say is get rid of the words in writing, because I don't think we, I think we just want to have a vote by the board. Because we don't want to go and and actually prepare a written approval during the meeting. So so I think that the, if we just say approved by the applicable staff or board, and then use your wording from there on.
Well, I I I, you know, minutes is it counts as writing. It really, it's it's fine. It's just the point is there has to be a written record. It can't just be, because you don't want an applicant saying, well, Andy Port said it was waived, so I my application is complete. Or, you know, I I talked to the board and they said it was going to be okay. That's all it means by that. When a lawyer writes in writing, that's all he means is just literally something written down that you can waive later. It could be minutes.
Right, so I I guess my my concern again, and I'd have to see the revised wording, but it because it what I said here is it had to be approved in writing before the formally submitted the application, and you've come up.
Right, so so if I may, I'll make a motion. So Chair Shan. Please change the last, I make a motion to change the last sentence so that it reads. I'm doing this on the fly. Requests for waiver a waiver of any particular submission requirements, comma, or listed attachments, comma, must be requested of and approved in writing by the applicable staff or board before the relevant application, how's that? Shall be deemed, shall be considered complete or eligible for consideration.
Second.
All right. I'm going to read it back just because.
Yeah.
All right, requests for waiver of any particular submission requirements or listed attachments must be requested of and approved in writing by the writing by the applicable staff or board before the relevant application shall be complete or eligible for consideration of the applicable application?
Uh, shall be considered complete. Sorry, I I started here. Shall be considered complete, yeah.
Okay, all right, let's take a vote. Counsel Eigerman?
Yes, please.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Shan, yes. All right.
One more.
You promise.
On page eleven. This is that section eleven J. And we talked some some about this, and I guess I just have a there are a couple of things here. I don't know how we get from the first paragraph to the second paragraph, because the planning board need to hold a hearing in order to in order to make its recommendation to the city council. It's not really clear. And I I guess we've lived with this for a while, so it probably isn't a problem, but as a more general question. Can the planning board hold up a certificate of occupancy if it thinks that an application is in conflict with the performance standards without without having gone through this process? I mean, it says an application for building permit and or certificate of occupancy. You know, you they have to be, has to be, if it's potentially in conflict, at some point, the planning planning board considers a certificate of occupancy potentially in conflict, then it can, then the city council with the advice of the planning board can refer to expert consultants. But that kind of implies that the planning board can, I think the planning board can hold up a certificate of occupancy in that case. The process is just very confusing, and I and, you know, Jennifer maybe is can explain it clearly for so I get it.
I don't know. This is Andy. I don't know how often this provision has actually been used or or needed in that way, but I think it's just trying to clarify that there's a process in which investigation would go into whether or not something's in compliance and and looking to address it between the various parties, but I don't know, Jennifer, if you have any comments on this ordinance provision, given it hasn't been used very much.
I don't have any particular, I would, I think the way it normally plays out is prior to certificate of occupancy, this type of issue is dealt with through commissioning, and if equipment's not performing to the appropriate standards, it's it's being dealt with even without the planning board having to intervene.
Counsel Eigerman, you got your hand up?
Yeah, um, this has never come up while I've been on the city council. I just looked up this ordinance and it claims it claims to date from twenty seventeen, but I don't think that's true. Maybe Counsel Connell remembers it, but I have no recollection of this paragraph whatsoever. I don't know why the city council is mentioned here. But I to answer Rick's question, I don't read this as giving the planning board any authority actually to stop a certificate of occupancy. It really only gives it, I believe, to the building inspector and then by this amendment by to the zoning administrator. Those are the only two officers. There are copies that are filed with the planning board, so you're aware of it. And then with the advice of the planning board and the zoning administrator, the city council can hire an expert. But I don't see anything here that that gives the planning board a sort of proactive role. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just telling you how I read it. So it's the question for the planning board is, I mean, and everyone is, what what would you like it to say?
Bonnie? Yeah, it I I agree that I don't even ever remember any of this ever coming up. It gets dealt with by staff. Advice and consent seems okay for the rare occasion that it might come up unless somebody can raise an issue, an example of an issue that this might trip us up. I just assume you know, leave it with the edits.
Well, if I could, so Jennifer, the the last paragraph. I I mean, isn't this really to satisfy a statutory concern that we can't, we we can't charge the applicant for hiring an expert? I mean, what is this about? Can't we always just hire an expert? I mean, can't you just?
Yeah, this this is Andy. I would concur with Counsel Eigerman, both on his prior comments and the the comment he's just made, that, you know, this this provision isn't really codifying something that the council doesn't already have, and it's 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 option, right? And to Counsel Eigerman's point, there's not an application before the board to charge a so-called peer review. So I think this provision isn't even hundred percent necessary in the ordinance, but it it was attempted, I think, at one point to point out that maybe there was a process to be used when whatever the situation was that arose at that time.
Well, again, I know we want to move on, and you guys, we've been at this an hour, and you want to get on your calendar, so why don't we leave it as is and then bring it to the council? Because it may very well be that the current council doesn't even really want to be involved in this. I mean, I I I mean, there as far as industrial property, that's mostly Counsel Shan's word. So we'll have to think about it on a policy basis, I guess.
Rick, do you have any comments on that one?
No, I just I just found it very confusing and, you know, I'd be happy if it disappeared, but but I was trying, I was trying to understand how it worked. I just I just couldn't figure it out.
Okay, all right, so we're going to leave this one as is. All right, are there other comments or questions, I mean, planning board as well?
Well, no, I mean, we, I mean, we've just voted on all our stuff, but I guess we need, we need to, yeah, you need the planning board to vote, and then we can get out of there here.
Right, so Bonnie.
So, um, are there any, this is your last chance, planning board members, any further comments? Now I'm going to ask for a, I'll cover all the changes that were made tonight with a request for a motion to recommend to the city council adoption as amended. As amended. And so I, unless that that motion should say something else. Okay, could I have a motion to that effect, please?
Bonnie, I would like to make a motion to recommend adoption of the amendments with the amendments that were adopted by the Planning and Development Committee this evening.
That clarifies it. Thank you. Okay, fine. I may have a second.
I'll second, Alden.
Thank you, Alden, and everyone, Dawn is here now. Everyone is eligible to vote except for Bob, who I recommend to abstain. And I'll do a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Bob?
Abstain.
Rick?
Agreed.
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that is recommended to the city council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, um. Counsel Eigerman, do we want to make a motion to?
We do, motion to adjourn.
Well, do we need to approve it out of committee here?
No, I'm sorry, a motion to recommend to the full council approval as amended.
Second.
Roll call, Counsel Eigerman?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Shan, yes. Do we need to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh. You might as well, a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Counsel Eigerman?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Shan, yes. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, now motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All right, Counsel Eigerman?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Shan, yes. All right, planning board, enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Chair Shan, this is Andy. I just noticed that Beth Lyles arrived, I believe. For her attendance.
Yep.
That's perfect.
Sorry about that.
We are just starting our, the rest of our meeting. Beth, welcome.
Okay, perfect.
That's great. Okay, so we have all of our members in good standing, minus one member, so we have eight. Okay.
And Bonnie, this is Dawn, just for the the record and for Linda, I joined at seven forty-two, if you want to put that in the minutes, Linda.
Okay, thank you. Um. I'm going to put off Bob's introduction until the later at the end of the meeting, just so we can move on, because I think the applicant has been waiting. I I apologize that we're talking with somebody we don't know who doesn't know us. We'll survive, but we will have a little chat together toward the end of the meeting. So I'd like to open the public hearing on forty Middle Street for a special permit for non-conformities and I'd just like to remind the board that we are the permit granting authority for this type of special permit because we have authorization under the downtown overlay district, but it is not a special permit for DOD. And I think I'll hand it over to the applicant or representative of the applicant to begin their presentation, which will include all the relevant pieces, and we can ask questions afterward. And who is here, Andy, for that?
I believe we have David Carey from Carey Design, and David, we have your drawings and so forth, so if you'd like to, just just tell us what you want, and we'll pull it up for you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, we can't hear you.
Yeah, David, your audio isn't great. I don't know if there's some obstruction with your microphone, but it's hard to hear you.
How is this?
It's a little better. You might have to talk loud.
Okay. Let me see if I can adjust. That's probably about the best I can do. Does that, is that better?
Bear, just good enough.
Not great. Oh, I'm not sure. My apologies to the board. I will repeat if, if you need me to and speak loudly. So this is the property of 40 Middle Street owned by Bill and Sally Green. They're here tonight for a special permit for nonconformities. You probably all recognize this, if you've eaten at Middle Street Foods directly across the street. The garage structure on the right there is, is the structure we'll be talking about. Thank you for the site plan. Quickly, the, just going through the logistics, the current use of the, of the property is residential, one family, and it will remain so. The, the structure is nonconforming with the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the district R3 in the DOD in several ways, does not conform to the front setback requirement of 20 feet, as it is 15 feet from the front line. Does not conform to the side setback requirement in the case of the garage where it lies 1.6 feet away. Finally, it does not conform to the rear setback of 20 feet as it lies 5.9 feet away. So you can see that the extension we are proposing is a forward extension of the existing garage of three feet. If you can see the bold line toward the front of the garage, that's a three foot by 18 foot addition and a upward extension of the building to provide a second story. Could I please have the architecturals?
David, I believe these are modified architectures, correct, the recent version?
I believe so, and I would be happy to go through the, the, the main architecturals and then the modified. There was a slight modification which occurred after we submitted our application. And the homeowners, Bill and Sally spoke with their closest neighbor, the, the one closest to the garage, and he asked that a couple of windows be removed on that side due to the proximity. And the, my clients were amenable to that and made a modification to that side of the building. I can show both, or I can just show the, the new, new modified version. In both cases, the plan remained the same. As you can see, the yellowed portion of the first floor is the extent to which we are adding to the front of that garage, a three foot chunk by 18 again. And then the second floor is new above there, that which is yellowed, which will allow them to have a bedroom. They have children that visit with grandchildren and that, that's the crux of this project was to allow one more bedroom with its, a bathroom as well and a separate stairway coming up on the backside of, of the project. You could go to the elevations, please. Thank you. This shows all four, excuse me, the, the front and rear elevations. The top left is rear existing viewed from the rear of the property. And you can see the added second story above the garage in, in yellow, in a darker yellow. And below, you can see the existing garage on the left and the proposed addition atop that garage on the right side. This is the modified version where there are actually a couple of, there were a couple of windows on that barely visible right-hand wall of the garage which faces the neighbor's property. They have been removed. And a couple of skylights actually were placed on that side of the building. Is there one more showing the side view? Yes, please. Thank you. This is the current, below is the current view from that neighbor's property off of the garage and behind it, the main house. And the new is above showing, showing the new facade facing, facing the neighbor from the side. We do have a perspective view and a in conjunction with the photo, the photo in the sketch to kind of give a sense as to what it will look like in 3D from the street. If you could turn to that, please. So the front elevation, as you can see, has, has the two, two garage doors. They will come forward three feet. There is a, a three foot awning over those doors. And the second floor is above it. The, this addition carries the eve line and detailing of the existing house. There is a, a wing. A little side note is this, this project is kind of near and dear to me because I owned it for a year and a half or so with my brother and we renovated the, the building at that time. So we, we created the second story L that exists there now. And at the time, there was a, prior to us, it actually had been a two-family. We returned it to a one-family and added the second story to make a better master on top. This in a way kind of completes that, I believe. And again, care was taken to make the L slightly smaller than the main house. And the, the garage carries the, the height of that L, but not the main house. And also with the setback, it has the characteristic that it's not making precedent architecturally. And also in, in the new design, we will be careful to, to, to match the existing detailing of the main house, which we felt was the garage doors will be reused. In, in, in summary, we kind of feel the, the proposed second story addition to the garage will not be more detrimental than the existing structure. It will match the height of the L, which runs perpendicular and is smaller and set back further as I saw than the main building. And it is scaled and detailed to match that existing architecture to respect the character of the existing building. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Bonnie, this is Dawn. I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
The rendering that is on the screen right now, if I'm looking at this perspective, I believe I'm seeing two windows on the garage side on the first floor and two windows on the second floor. As you said, in consultation with your abutting neighbor, you've eliminated the windows on the second floor. Is that correct?
You are correct. This.
And on the first floor, thank you. And on the first floor, I see two windows. Perhaps I'm looking at this incorrectly. When I saw the elevations, I believe there's one window with your abutting neighbor, right? Okay, thank you. So with that in mind, my question is, if I'm on State Street, walking middle, going south towards Federal, you know, when I look at that view there, it's just a, you know, one with one small window, it, it's just a bunch of siding there. How much do I see from the street? You know, if the houses were, if, if your buddy house is three feet from it, I, I really don't care. You're not going to be seen. I think you've done a nice job personally from, from looking perpendicular on, from the house to Middle Street. But I'm just a bit concerned, not concerned, just questioning, I should say. How, what does that look like walking on Middle Street, walking south? Because to me, it's just a fair amount of, of just siding.
That's correct. However, you're, you're also correct in, or well, your question is, is a good one. You, you really don't see, what you see from Middle Street is pretty much what you're seeing in this elevation. There's a beautiful brick home directly beside us. And it's, it's they who will see that from their own backyard. Next to that is a parking lot and a, thank you, yes. That's kind of what you see as you're coming along Middle Street. As you can see, next to that is what used to be the old newspaper building. I'm not sure how that's used right now. But that is a rear parking lot, which, which actually, if you, are we able to back up and perhaps go around the other side of this house? I don't know if we can do that on the Google. But that would probably give you a sense.
You said, right, right. Okay, thank you. That's very informative. Thank you. No questions for the applicant. Thanks, Bonnie.
Other board members? Questions?
I'll speak up. It's MJ. I, I guess I, first, David, I commend you. I've always loved this property. The, the work you did before is wonderful. The property is very sweet and I'm, I'm voicing a concern that one day when these people move out, can the new property above the garage be used as a separate property? Because there is an entry at the back. Could it be, well, divided, but also leased as a separate property, which of course would increase cars, parking, whatever. Maybe Andy can ask, answer that.
Well, that would be a question of whether or not the property had a proper two-family use allowed and whether or not the, there was an accessory unit allowed, right?
Well, it was a two-family, so probably could go back to a two-family, or?
Well, you, if one reverts back to a compliant use, then you're stuck with that, right? You stick with that, right? If it was maintained as a non-compliant use or a, you know, two-family use, then you could continue that going forward. If, if, if a two-families revert back to a single family, then you're talking about getting a special permit for the two-family use. I don't know if Jennifer wants to comment on that at all.
I would say, I would hazard to guess that this property would actually require a variance moving forward to go to a two-family because it doesn't have adequate lot area or frontage for a two-family in this zoning district. So the short answer is that would not be a possibility in any legal form. And if someone were to try to, and it were to, we were to become aware of it, it would be enforced as a violation of the existing zoning.
Okay. And I guess I don't really have any other leg to stand on other than I feel like this is the kind of infill we're trying to avoid. It feels a little big in this space. I think it feels very big to the lovely brick house next door, although it gives them maybe more privacy. I, I just think it's feeling like an infill project to me that maybe is not desirable. Just for discussion. If anybody else agrees.
This is Bob.
Excuse me, Bob, you're breaking up. We can't make out what you're saying. It's not working.
Bob, one suggestion. There is also a call-in number with the, with either your email or the city's website for the meeting. If you wanted to try that, if you're having an audio issue, that may be helpful.
Okay, we'll move on to other comments. Let's build on what MJ's been brought up. Does anyone else want to speak to the issue of this being infill that we might not want to encourage? I kind of was thinking the same thing. I talked myself out of it, MJ, because they are continuing the roof line of the house. If they were projecting in some way beyond that, I would have a real problem with it. The garage is already there. And the neighbor on that side has asked for some adjustments that they've made. So I'm sort of thinking it's okay. It's meant right now. It could be used some other way in the future. And as Jennifer has pointed out, they'd have to come for further changes to be approved. But for right now, yeah. The family comes to visit and they aren't going to be bringing any more cars right now anyway. So I'm, I'm not worried about an inordinate amount of, of parking problems. I still do have a little question about the the, the size of it. And I'd like to hear from others.
I, I, if you would like to first all speak, but I, I do have one comment regarding size.
Go for it.
Part of the, part of the determination, as you can see, actually in the elevation, that wing or the L on the back is lower, you know, the roof is lower, which is appropriate. In bringing, in putting, in placing a second floor above the garage, had we, as a forensist, had we brought it down a little, it would have been a kind of a tough collision of roofs. So the eve line remained the same. But the, the ridge itself is low, like the, like the L in the back. So there was some, you know, in terms of design, some, some discussion and or determination as to to how to do it best. And it, the, the perspective is always so helpful because we wanted to see in L, in, in real, how it really would look from the street. And given, given its lower ridge and setback, we felt that carrying the eve line around the building was the cleanest and best look. It did give us basically an attic space, very, very low. Basically, you could crawl in that. Or they may just use that as cathedral. But had it been lower, it would have been a more difficult and perhaps not as pleasing front.
Bonnie?
Yes, Rick?
I actually don't have a concern about size. This is a, really a special house. It's very unique on, in its location. It's surrounded, as far as I can tell, by buildings that are much bigger than it in terms of their floor, their, their footprints. Except for the, the brick building. It's, it's immediate neighbor. But all around it, back one side and all the buildings across the street are are larger. So, so I don't have a concern about it. And I think another point is that unique among the buildings on Middle Street, this is set back and has a front lawn, which kind of mitigates any, any size. So for those reasons, you know, I, I, my only concern, it has to do with the, how close it is to the, to the neighbor's backyard. But the neighbor is not opposing it and they've made adjustments in that case. So I actually feel comfortable about the scale of it.
Thank you. Did anyone else like to weigh in?
This is, this is Alden. Yeah, I, I agree with that assessment. I, I think the setback from Middle Street mitigates that, that size factor for me. So I, I, I think, I think it seems reasonable along with the lower height of the roof in line with the L.
Okay.
This is Beth. I agree. I think the fact that it's set back makes it seem smaller and not overwhelm the house or the other houses in the neighborhood. I did wonder, I know that there were some letters in support. I did just wonder if the brick house, if one of those letters was from the owner of the neighboring house, the one that sits so close on the property line.
Yes. And that one, I think, I believe is the first in, in line. And, and that was after review with them and, and the alterations with the windows.
Okay, thank you.
Checking to see if Bob has been able to connect. All right, you could unmute yourself. All right, you could unmute yourself. Bob, we can't hear a word.
Doing very well here. Can you hear me now?
Yes, very clear.
I'm on my phone. I, I just, I, I think I agree with some of the, the, the last couple of comments. I think, I think the setback from the street is important for, for the scale, at least as it's perceived from the street. I, I still would be concerned about the adjacent property. This is a pretty significant structure that, given, given the previous hours discussion about, about, you know, dimensional requirements with bots, this is a pretty significant structure that, that does not conform. And, you know, it, it sounds like from what I've heard, the, the property owners are okay with this. But I just wonder if there are any adverse impacts. I don't think there are any shadow impacts given orientation. Are, are there any other impacts that have, have been discussed relative to this, given proximity?
David, do you want to respond to that?
I, I think the, the, the impact that was most discussed between the neighbors was privacy. And I think they have a hot tub in their backyard. So I, I think that, you know, we, I've lived in Newburyport myself for quite a while and understand the, the fishbowl effect in, in various properties throughout South End and, and North End where I am now. So that was of concern. And I think that in doing what they did, this, it, it's funny, this, this, I mean, you, you can't judge just on the use of this particular family, you know, for future generations, but this, this is a lesser used room even from their standpoint. But even so, they felt it was appropriate to, to remove the windows and, and therefore the privacy, the concern was, was mitigated.
Okay, then, other comments from other members? So being a special permit for non-conformities, we have findings. I think we've pretty much discussed them, but I just wanted to call them out. There's no addition of a new non-conformity. There will be no, so that's clear. The project extends the non-conforming side yard setback both laterally and upward. We agree to that. And that the most important finding is that it will not substantially be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming use or structure. And I think we've clarified that. So I believe it's in conformance with the findings unless someone would like to comment otherwise. Okay. Andy, is there anything else that we need to deal with before we take a motion to approve?
You know, notwithstanding any, you know, comment, public comment or so forth, no, I think the board is inclined to make a motion. It's, everything seemed to be in order, I guess.
Absolutely right. I forgot public comment. As I am want to do, let's call for public comment. And Andy, if you see anyone with a raised hand, would you please let them in?
And we do have a Sally Green. Sally, are you able to unmute yourself and address the board?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say, we own the house. We moved to, and my husband's here sitting next to me, we moved to Newburyport eight years ago and we absolutely love Newburyport. And we absolutely love this house. I love it because it is historic and because it, because of the beautiful job that Dave Carey did restoring it before we moved in. And I, we very much want to maintain the look and feel of the existing house as we do this addition. Because as someone said, it's a special house and we feel that as well. We, we have two daughters, a son-in-law, and two grandkids and they live in, in Hingham and in Portland, Maine. So they're not right next door, but they're nearby. And we just, we didn't have all that when we bought the house. And so really the point is to try to have enough room so that they can come and visit and they love the area as well. And, you know, it, I just wanted to reassure the committee that we care deeply about this house and, and we hope that you will approve this. So we can continue to use it and use it with our family as well.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Andy?
No one else. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and I'll entertain a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for 40 Middle Street. Do you have a motion? Anybody?
This is Beth. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Beth. And a second?
Second, Alden.
Thank you, Alden. Any further discussion? I'll do roll call for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
No.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, we have enough votes to confirm approval of this special permit. You are good to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we will move on to other business on the agenda, a request for an extension at 75 Parker Street. This has to do with site plan approval decision and they were held up by, from what I understand from the staff report, by the pandemic, from starting their project within the two-year timeframe. Andy, would you, or is there anyone here representing the applicant, give us a little more detail on it?
Yeah, sure. Lisa Gallagher is here. She could probably speak to their timeframe per se, but as you mentioned, they're just asking for a time extension on an existing permit. Lisa, did you want to address the board?
Um, I, I, I sent a letter around. Did everybody get that letter?
They did, yes.
Yes. Okay, so basically, you know, we're, we're in conversations with two different contractors, just because it's been very difficult to get somebody to, to do this work and much less give us, you know, they gave us an estimate of what it would cost before COVID all happened. And then those estimates kept changing and they became fluid. So we went out to somebody else. Anyway, it's just been hard trying to nail somebody down. We've got somebody that I think we're going to be using, but you know, we're in the queue, basically. We're not the first person that they're going to work for. So I mean, it's just, this is what's happening. They have a shortage of materials and then people to work for. And so we're in the queue. We're just not, they can't do it. We can't start yet. That's all I'm saying. So we want the extension to give us some time.
And you're talking about an extension of two years?
Yeah.
Okay. Andy, what was the, I, I wasn't quite sure why there were two draft motions here because there was one just to extend it by one month. Could you explain the difference?
Um, oh, I think, and Caitlin and Jennifer may have discussed the fact that the, there's been some tolling during the pandemic of some permits. So that it may have been part of that. I didn't get into a detailed discussion with them about the, the dates and so forth. From my perspective, I would suggest granting a longer extension for them to, given how hard it is for folks to get contractors at this time.
Yeah, that's what I thought we should do. I just needed the clarification. Any other board member have a question?
I do. This is Don. I think Andy or others to the point with respect to COVID, there's been no executive decision or legislative decision, adjudatory decision that is extending the time limit of all these permits due to COVID irrespective of whether we grant an extension?
There has been a stay of some of those during the pandemic. But as we come out of that and not being sure what the timeframe is going to be going forward, we're assuming that people are still going to need extensions beyond that to catch up with, with their projects.
So, so just, just for my clarification, we don't know with, with specificity that because the COVID started March of, you know, whatever, 2020 and perhaps over last month, so that the, the Massachusetts has extended all permits for one year. We don't have something that's specific.
Yeah, I know, we do actually. And so I, I guess to save everybody time, we thought the more efficient thing would be to just have the request. I think we were talking with Jennifer and Caitlin about this request coming in and we're going to see probably some others, which isn't uncommon. It seemed more efficient to grant or ask for the extensions and grant them because the, we can send out to you essentially a page-long or two summary of how the pandemic affected things. And then for each application, there's a different date, as you noted, for when their permit might have been active and, and how long it might affect them. So I can go back with Jennifer and Caitlin and we can check the permit file, add the, you know, the dates or send you the, the paging through that explains the dates, you know, when they started and as far as extensions people may have gained during the pandemic. And then, you know, obviously that, that extension would have, would have terminated. But the, the time it would take to calculate those and to bicker over the little details here and there, it did not seem worthwhile, I guess.
I, I, I agree.
That was usually, I think, the reason why Jennifer, Caitlin, and Diane and I thought it made more sense to just have the applicant ask for the extension. We did have, I don't know if it was support, I think it might have been the CBA, who had recently gotten a letter from attorney media explaining in great detail, you know, the, how the pandemic affected one particular application, but the minutia of the dates just seemed a little bit overkill. So.
Sure, sure. And, and and again, if the board is okay with even a three-year extension, what I was going to suggest is because it's not obvious, we say two-year extension and then there is some further clarification that, that everything has been granted a one-year, whatever, if for practical purposes, three years. My suggestion would be, not a strong suggestion, that we put that this permit is effective until July 1st, 2022, as, as an example. Or June 1st, 2022. I'm sorry, 2023. I'm sorry, I can't add anymore. 2023. And the only difference, I don't know if you could appreciate the difference versus two years and then in effect, if there's something, it really is a three-year extension.
I, I would certainly concur with Don on that, just because it would make the zoning administrator's job easier in knowing, or for the rest of us, in knowing when that termination date was, rather than again, having to go back to the relevant pandemic terms and add the dates and so forth. It can be done in every instance, but there are a lot of folks affected by this. And that, you know, a little bit of minutia over a couple of days doesn't necessarily result in a whole lot of benefit from what I've seen.
And, and what I'd like, I'd like to clarify, this is just for the start of the project. It doesn't have to be finished.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, so everybody knows that. So the, do you want to add that actual date to the motion?
That would be my suggestion, yes.
Okay, so instead of for two additional years.
Make it, yeah, make it July 1st, 2020, 2023, two years from, from now.
Until July 1, 2020.
Yeah, but today's July 21st.
So let's make it.
I understand. I'm just trying to make it on a monthly. You can make it July 2024th, if you want. I really, that's not the point. So whatever you want to do.
Well, it should, it should be two years out from.
It doesn't have to be, by the way. We have the, we have the authority as an site to grant it for one month, six months, whatever. But whatever you want to do.
All right, make it August 1st, 2023, right?
Sure.
Okay, that's what the motion will say. Anything else for comment at this point before I take a motion? All right, Don, you want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll move to grant the continuation until August 1st.
Excuse me, to approve an extension?
To prove an extension to, to August 1st, 2023.
Thank you. May I have a second?
MJ, I'll second.
MJ, thank you. Further discussion? All right, I'll take a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. You're good to go for two more years.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, we need a motion. You're welcome.
How do I get off? How do I get out now?
You can just leave, yeah.
Turn off your computer.
Okay. Oh, I see the leave button. Okay, bye, sorry.
Okay, approval of minutes from our August 7th meeting. I'll take a motion.
I'll make it Bonnie. Bonnie, I'll make it. Approve, Don.
Don, thank you. And a second?
Second, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. Any discussion? Call rule. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Bob?
I'll abstain on this one, too.
Thank you. Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Abstain, I was absent.
Thank you. Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, they're approved. Other updates. Let's begin, I'm sorry, we have to do this electronically or online or whatever. We did it with Alden a year ago. We'll do it with Bob now. Hopefully we'll be seeing each other face-to-face in the not-too-distant future. But I'd like to have Bob just give us a real quickie on who he is and everybody else, you know, just what you think is relevant for him to know about you, planning board member. But we'll start with you, Bob.
Okay, and if you hear my dog whining in the background, I apologize. As, as I said to the city councilors, I, I heard about the opening on the planning board and, and I had a very brief preliminary conversation with Bonnie, probably a couple of months ago now. And then wrote a letter to the mayor expressing my interest in, in the position. My wife and I moved to Newburyport in, well, about a year and a half ago. So just prior to everything shutting down, we moved from Winchester, Massachusetts, where we lived for 28 years. Similar in size to Newburyport, but not nearly the same amount of activity in the commercial center that Newburyport has. So that's one of the reasons why we moved here. We're, we're downsizing. Our kids are, are grown and out of college now. I'm still working, working from home as an architect for another year or two, but we're, we're very interested in getting engaged in the community. So a lot of my experience, which dates back to late 1970s, is in mixed use and commercial architecture, a lot of retail experience, a lot of office, residential hotel experience in urban environments of various scales. So, you know, I'm, I'm interested in participating in, in your oversight of, of next steps relative to Newburyport's growth. So I volunteered, very, very excited about being part of the, the board and look forward to working with all of you.
And we're very excited to have you. Thank you for taking on this responsibility. I'll just go down the list as I see you. Rick?
Bob and I had a conversation. My background is in urban planning and I think we have some interesting discussions coming forward.
Beth?
Hi, um, I am a environmental attorney and land use attorney. So my background is primarily legal, not as much of the planning or design. But yeah, I grew up in Newport and moved away when I was 18 and said I would never come back and then came here to raise my kids. So yeah. That's me.
Don?
Hi. I'm a registered professional engineer, worked in the energy sector for my entire career, currently. Currently retired, although doing selective consulting work. Experience, as I mentioned, in the energy sector and in business administration with respect to financing, funding large infrastructure projects. Welcome aboard.
Alden?
Yeah, hi, welcome. And I moved to Newport about four years ago, and I've been on the board for a year. From my point of view, it's fun to have someone newer on the board than me. It's exciting, exciting for me. My background is I have a law degree, but I spent most of my time working in the computer field. And I've always had an interest in in planning, and so I was interested to get involved here, so.
MJ?
Hi, welcome, Bob. I practice as an interior designer. I worked for mostly architecture firms in Cambridge for many, many years and now consult on my own and with other firms and joined the board five years ago and moved in Newport 14 years ago. And I learned a lot doing this, so, welcome.
Yes, welcome aboard. I am happily retired. Prior to that, my career was spent developing retirement communities throughout New England. I've been in Newport now 20 years, and it's just a wonderful city to be a part of. So welcome to our community.
Thanks very much.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody. I always appreciate hearing what people have to say about themselves each time we go through it. So now, that's always fun for me. Now, we have some sad news. MJ, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, as as you're coming in, Bob, I'm leaving. So I'm finishing a five-year term and I'll call it taking a break. Maybe I'll come back one day, but just feel like I've got a hectic life going on. Hope to add more, maybe one day, if I can ever come back. So my life's a little more settled. You're in good hands here.
MJ, we, you know, there's Anne has set a precedent for that. She's come around again.
Yeah.
So she's set a good example, and we look forward to hopefully having you back with us. But in the meantime, we're really very appreciative of everything you've contributed.
MJ, it's been terrific to work with you.
Thank you. Well, Bonnie was probably going to say that I've agreed until I can, my place can be filled, that I will actually continue on, even though.
You're gonna, you're gonna see her face here or in person, at least for a little while. But in the meantime, in order to really free her up, we need everybody's help to source a new candidate. I don't have anything in particular that I'm looking for. You guys may want to sort of voice some interests. I figure land use or built environment or real estate, realtor of some sort, we're kind of still looking for that perspective of the the developer view or the the real estate representative, but it's not absolutely essential. If you have any other thoughts about the kinds of expertise we ought to be looking for, I'd like to hear it now and then just put it out there, because as you know, we do a whole lot better if we can source our own candidate than asking the mayor to put an ad in the paper. And I noticed recently, I don't know where I saw it, if it was on the website or if it was in the newspaper. There was a listing, and luckily, we were not on the list. So we must have been at that stage where we were in the process of getting Bob approved, and so she figured we were, we were full. And I'd rather not go that route if we can avoid it. So let me know if you can, if you know of anybody who you'd like to approach or you'd like me to approach. And in the meantime, is there any particular expertise you think we ought to be looking for? Okay, we'll take the next one body who walks in the room. It's gonna be on our terms. Okay. Any other updates from the planning office, Andy?
No, thank you. Obviously, the executive session item, but nothing, nothing here. Thank you.
Right, so what we're gonna do is I'm gonna ask, I'll read the motion and ask for us to go into executive session. We will not be coming back into a public meeting, so we will adjourn ourselves for the evening from that executive session. So the motion is to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, the matter of the institution for savings versus the City of Newport Planning Board. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body. May I have a motion to?
So move, Bonnie.
Thank you, Don. And a second?
A second. This is Beth.
Thank you, Beth. And I'll take roll call. Alden?
Here.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
I'll say yes, but I just want to make sure we're using the link from.
I'm gonna ask Andy about that afterward. Yeah.
Awesome, yes.
So you're yes. Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So Andy, how do we get there?
Sure, sure. So click on the link in the email that I had sent noting executive session, and that will take you into the closed session we have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I gotta go find it. All right, see you sometime.
It goes for everybody.
If if anybody wants, I can just resend that to all if you'd like.
It was sent July 13, correct, Andy?
It sounds correct, yeah.
Okay, so leave this one, Andy, you're saying, and go to that one.
That's correct. We can be in there just a moment or two.
Okay, see you, guys.